Title I can have such a negative connotation. My elementary school was a Title I school. I told the district I wanted to be at a Title school. Morning, Leilani. It was very important for me to replicate the experiences I had as a child. I can't honestly pinpoint when I said I want to be a teacher. We're gonna walk. I just knew that the band room was something I always looked forward to walking to when I was in middle school. Turn around, reach up. I knew I want to be a teacher and I really like music. Again, and one, two, three, four. I had heard things about the school and it really reminded me so much of what my elementary school was like. Pinch in the middle. Pinch in the middle. Play DNA by yourselves. I was born and raised in Lafayette, Colorado. My elementary school in Colorado was a bilingual school. It's really nice to speak Spanish with my kiddos. Yes, we're here to learn English, but we want to know what your culture does. How many beats are in a half note? I think it's very important for students to see a part of themselves in teachers. A, G, F, E, D. The amount of students that say, "I want to be like so-and-so," and it's someone that works here at school, or "I want to be like you." I am the change, I am the change, I am the change. If we don't give that to kids, it's really hard for them to also kind of see a future for themselves. I am the change, I am the change, I am the change. Hold hands, here we go, one, two. It's so much more than just the instruments that you get to play and learn. 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, turn around. It's a time where we all come together. Music is such a vulnerable thing where they can be nervous to sing around each other. Now everyone sings, here we go. A lot of it is skills outside of what the classroom does for us. Be patient. Be patient. Learning to wait is a skill. Waiting and patience. They're doing math when they count beats together. We know we would need how many beats in each measure? Three. You have kids that maybe can't fully read a book. Ticka, ticka, tee, tee. But they can come and read music. Having them know that they can be confident in other spaces is very important. And then if they want to be musicians, they can also be musicians. It just cheers me up and I love, just love listening. I just close my eyes and pretend I'm right there singing it to everyone, the whole world. Raise your hand if you're excited. I'm so excited. There's this really good quote by Maya Angelou. People won't remember what you did, but people will remember how you made them feel. I just want kids to remember how they felt here. Again, here we go. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
LPS, Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Tuesday, September 9th is called to order. Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Goodwin?
Present.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Present.
Mrs. Krevalovic?
Here.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Here.
Dr. Rowner?
Here.
Mr. Schravostov?
Present.
The Open Meetings Act is posted in the entry for those who would like to read it. We now have a special hearing for the property tax request. The Board of Education, Lancaster County School District 001, also known as Lincoln Public Schools, is conducting this special public hearing pursuant to Section 77-1632 and other Nebraska laws. These laws provide that the 2025-2026 property tax requests may not exceed the school district's property tax request from the prior year unless the school district first holds a special public hearing and then passes a resolution that includes all requirements of the statutes. The prior year's property tax request would not correctly fund the 2025-2026 budget, which is being considered for formal adoption by the Board of Education at a later meeting. The purpose of this special public hearing is to receive testimony on the proposed property tax request. Any testimony received will be taken into consideration by the Board of Education when action is taken to approve or modify the provided property tax requests prior to October 15th, 2025. A notice of this special public hearing containing all statutory information has been published in a newspaper of general circulation in the school district at least four days prior to this hearing. I hereby open this special public hearing for Lancaster County School District 001. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak on the proposed property tax request. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself and we will inform you when one minute remains. Section 841412 Nebraska Open Meetings Act now requires that any member of the public desiring to provide public comment or to otherwise address the board shall identify themselves, include an address, and the name of any organization represented by such person. We have no blue cards for people wishing to speak. This includes this evening's public hearing for Lincoln Public Schools. Next, we'll move on to approval of minutes. We have minutes on our August 25th budget hearing and August 26th board meeting and work session, just the board meeting and a work session for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved as published. Next, we have special reports, presentation, celebration, success, the foundations for Lincoln Public Schools update. I think we have a video and then Angelina.
As summer winds down, we're taking a moment to celebrate something truly incredible, the 2025 Spark Summer Learning Program. Over the course of nine amazing weeks, Spark became more than just a summer camp. It became a space for growth, curiosity, laughter, and unforgettable memories. This summer, we were proud to welcome an average of 125 campers each week, creating a vibrant community filled with energy and passion. Together, we brought students from 48 different schools across the region, each one adding their own spark to our program. And thanks to the generosity of our supporters and sponsors, we were able to award an incredible $138,730 in scholarships, helping ensure access for so many families. Behind every successful camper was a caring guide. Our program was powered by 23 dedicated teachers who brought creativity and heart into every activity. And we can't forget our community partners. With over 30 guest speakers and sponsors who shared their time, expertise, and inspiration, making each week unique and engaging. Each week brought something new, from exploring the science behind roller coasters and bridges to hands-on fun with construction trades, sports science, robotics, and beyond. Spark campers got to learn by doing. They designed, they built, they tested, they asked why, and sometimes, what if? They stepped into many careers, made new friendships, and discovered new strengths they didn't even know they had. To our campers, you amazed us with your curiosity and creativity. To our families, thank you for trusting us. To our teachers, sponsors, and guest speakers, your time and commitment made all the difference. This was a summer of learning, leading, and lighting the path for Nebraska's future thinkers and problem solvers. From all of us at Spark, thank you for being part of something bright, bold, and brilliant. Let's keep that spark going and we'll see you next summer.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Angelina Cunningham, Director of Operations at the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools. I am honored to be here this evening on behalf of President Natalia Widder, who unfortunately is unable to attend due to illness. She truly wishes she could have been here to deliver these updates personally as they reflect the incredible work of the foundation staff in partnership with Lincoln Public Schools. You've just seen a video highlighting Spark, one of our inspiring programs, so I will focus my remarks on other areas of impact. The past year, the foundation distributed nearly $4 million in support across the district. That included $2.5 million for activity complexes, more than $90,000 in emergency relief for students and families, and $63,000 to reduce student lunch debt. In addition, we awarded more than 120 scholarships and honored 75 students, 75 staff, and 19 educators through our recognition programs. Importantly, our donor base grew over 2,200 supporters, with nearly 1,000 new donors stepping forward to champion public education. Looking ahead to the 2025-26 fiscal year, we have set a 3.2 million fundraising target. We are focused on activating underutilized funds, building stronger corporate partnerships, and launching new signature events, including celebrating the 10th anniversary of the Career Academy this October. Priority projects this year include continued support for activities complexes, focus programs, emergency needs, and EL certification, all designed to directly align with district priorities and respond to emerging needs. On behalf of Natalia, our staff, our board, thank you for your continued partnership. Together, we're not only funding programs, we're creating opportunities, and removing barriers so that every student can thrive. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move on to public comment. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the board. We do not have any blue cards or speakers today, so we'll move on to consent agenda. We will be removing one item from consent agenda. The superintendent contracts will be reviewing this under item number 13. Are there any other items to remove from the consent agenda? Is there a motion for approval of the remaining items on the consent agenda? Annie? I mean, sorry, Barb.
I move approval of 9.1, the human resource manners, and 9.2, routine business.
Okay, one second, good. Are there any questions, comments, or conflict statements? Okay, seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Krevalovic?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schravostov?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes. Next, we have item 10, first reading, 10.1.1, the 2025-26 LPS budget adoption. Annie?
So, the budget development for LPS is a year-round process. We even have our committee in a manner in which it overlaps so that you can have the same people who started help bring it in at the end, same board members. We began providing information to the public in March with the presentation of a budget calendar. And then there are a lot and extensive opportunities for the public to put in information along the way. So now we're at a place where Dr. Standish will provide a brief presentation covering both of our agenda items as we are bringing the budget in for a landing for 2026. So this is for 10.1.1, 2025-26, Lincoln Public Schools budget adoption, as well as 10.1.2, 2026, Lincoln Public Schools tax request.
Thank you, Ms. Mumgarde, as Chair of the Finance Committee, and thank you for highlighting that I'll be presenting on both items related to the budget, which is the budget adoption resolution and the property tax request. This is first reading, so it will be back to you at your next meeting. This graphic is meant just to delineate the year-round process that was referenced that really gears up with community information in June, but a lot of legwork goes into that prior to June as we work through the months throughout the year. And this budget will be adopted and filed in September. And then in November, we'll start forecasting and working for the next year's budget. So our team works very, very hard. What we still have in front of us is we have first reading tonight. We will have second reading and consideration for adoption on September 23rd. And then we will file the official budget by September 30th, and the tax request has to be filed by mid-October. Throughout the process, we did have two public work sessions, three public forums, six Board of Education meetings with opportunities for comment, an online input opportunity via the website, and two public hearings. The one thing that I want to highlight to the community is this year represented a really successful shift in creating on-demand content that people could go to our website and consume whenever they chose. They might watch a bit of a Facebook video and then go see something on the website. And then with the online input window, they were able to submit comments and feedbacks. So that kind of on-demand format versus having a meeting where people had to revolve their schedules around and come physically somewhere to give input has been very successful. We had close to 1,000 views of various things. So I do think that was a really good transition we've made these last couple of years. This budget is a $558, almost $559 million budget. The most significant part of this slide is we are 90% personnel, 88.9, so just shy of 90% personnel, which means that as we collect money from the state through state aid and property taxes, we actually turn around and put it back out into the community through payroll. And we run a $30 million payroll each month, so then people in Lincoln are part of the economy and participating in restaurants and shopping and all kinds of things. So the most important thing we do here is educate children, but the money actually flows back out to the Lincoln economy. We always align our strategic plan to every budget request. So this is that alignment of various budget increases under each of the strategic plan major pillars. And so you can see the salary and benefit increase is always the largest category that we have through the presentation. One variable and one metrics that we consider. So the strategic plan side really focused on how do we align needs and how do we look at student needs and meet those needs in a strategic way. And then this says, what are some economic indicators? So we look at things like inflation. Inflation is not the best variable because it's about cost of goods. We actually have a primary cost of employing people. So we look at the Bureau Labor Statistics employment index, and then when that's available, we compare that for where we are with our budget increase of about 3.63. So looking at our source of funds, we are the majority, property taxes. And one thing we'll be analyzing this year is the format for which property taxes came in with receipts. Now, a portion of that is coming from the state because of the property tax credit program being a direct credit that comes straight to us, not back to the homeowners through an income tax credit. So that will shift our state and property taxes, and we'll be looking at that when we look at our 26-27 budget. When you look at, we estimated our valuation increase to be 7%. It actually came in at about 8.5%. And you can see that our levy rate is going down about 8.7, 8.8 cents. So that is because of valuation growth, and we did receive more state aid this year. Just a reminder that when valuation grows, often state aid the following year declines. So that'd be something that we're forecasting and keeping an eye on as we look to the next year. The board always asked for a review of what this means to an average homeowner. So for an average homeowner, if their home went up that average value of 8.6%, then their property taxes to Lincoln Public Schools would go down $7 a year or essentially be flat, going from 24 to 25. So when you look at our tax levy, some policy shifts in the last couple of years have dictated that our levy changes a little bit more each year than it did in the past, but that is because they're an increased state commitment. There's increased state funding for special education reimbursement. There's also been elements of the formula that have been changed. So when you look at our source of funds, we are actually using a little bit of cash flow for the $558 million, and the levy for the general fund will be 90 cents. When you look at our revenue trend, you can see that we definitely have to navigate major swings in revenue. We could have 7% one year, 2% the next, 8%, 1%. This year is a little bit more of an incremental revenue growth at the 4% along with the incremental 3.6 as expenditure growth. So we have official documents that have to be filed. So this is the notice of hearing for the budget summary. This is what the official will be. Some of the numbers did change there at the last minute, and so we'll be making sure that all of that is accurate and presented as required by state law. And then our budget adoption document that has to be filed with the auditor's office will also be filed, and there's copies of those attached and available to the public. And then we also have our special hearing that we just conducted, so there's a notice of that to set the property tax request. So all in all, this amazing team of people carries us through all of these months of heavy lifting and analysis and making sure we get all of the i's dotted and the t's crossed, and I greatly appreciate them. And that positions us well for considering adopting the budget here at the end of the month. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I was wondering, it appears to me that our levy is among the lowest that we've probably ever had. Is that true?
Yeah, so if, I mean, we did go back 40 years in history at one point in time, and this is the lowest levy for sure. And there's been major policy changes to drive that, but it is a significant effort to reduce property tax burden through lowering the levy.
Thank you for that.
Annie?
I just want to say as Chair of the committee, I've come a long way in understanding how to read our budget. We were just talking about it. I mean, this is our budget in paper. And when you carry it around, it makes your bag very heavy. And there are key things to know and understand within it. I just want to put out there that sometimes when we look at our budget, it's as important as what's in the budget, as important as what's in the budget is what's left out of the budget. And that not only have we had a historically low levy time, but that we have had such a long, we have such a wonderful, long process and so many times for people to put input. Like, there's a long list of what we are not putting in our budget at this point in time. And that list comes from, though, because of the decision-making of what does go into it. And so I just want to say that I do love our calendar and I love the expertise of all that bring the information forward. You all meet, you make decisions. We have had to make some hard decisions of what we're going to do in the next year. Sometimes people say, "Don't you have enough?" And it's like every one of our decisions is built on the impact on students, on teacher, on our educational environment, and the impact of it all. It's all aligned with our community's strategic plan. And I am here to say that we did say no a few times, more than a few times. But I find that every time we say no to something, it really takes it to another level of like, no, we can't do that, but let's look at what's the kernel of what's needed there and how can we possibly move forward with that. It's been my experience that it has almost always moved us forward, the noes have, as well as the yeses. And the ideas that the community brings to us are always needed and wanted. We may not be able to do it now, but it does open up doorways and windows to other ideas of what we could be doing. And I think that's really what keeps us as such a quality district. I just want to say that, but I also just really want to give a big shout out to Dr. Standish and her team. They are a roomful of true teachers because not only do you bring your expertise to it, but you help bring us along and understand what it is that we are looking at, what we have to decide upon, and how we can best represent our districts and our city in making the decisions of kind of budget that we build. So I give you a huge shout out to Liz and Kim and Jessica and Doug and Julie and April and a year-long worth. Liz and I were talking earlier, and I said, "Ooh," you're ready to say, "Whew." And she's like, "Oh, I did that like two weeks ago." And so we're just about ready to jump into like, what do we do next? So thank you all very much for this budget. It is definitely a budget of the community and for the community, and I feel very pleased to have been part of making it. Thank you.
I guess I have to point out, because over the years, we've been accused of taking the windfall, quote, "when the valuations went up," and I always would have to respond, "Well, we're not going to keep it because the state's going to take it back." When the state doesn't cut us like they didn't cut us last year, we actually do try to keep it, keep our property taxes in line. And so I give you a lot of credit for lowering our levy to the lowest it's ever been. So thanks for all your work on this. And thanks for your great presentations, because I think this makes so much more sense than when I started eight years ago. All right. All right, so we'll move on to item 10.1.3, Policy 3760, Safe Driving Record Standard for Drivers. Barb?
Yes, I will go and turn this over to Liz Standish as well.
Yes, this is just a revision to policy to align with rules, regs, and laws. It has always been a practice to include the medical examination. This is just codifying it in policy. So this does not change what we do. It just aligns the policy with what's required to be in policy.
Do we need to take action on this this evening?
I think it's okay for two reading. I think this is really just making sure that the policy matches what it needs to match. So I think we're okay.
Okay.
But thank you for asking.
Any other discussion? Okay. We'll be on item 10.1.4, Northwest Activities Complex Baseball Field Lighting Project. Barb?
Yes, again, Liz Standish.
Yes, you noticed in your consent agenda item, there was also some field lighting there. Sometimes we're able to find opportunities for funding to add amenities that maybe we haven't found funding for in the past, and so this year we had that opportunity and we are able to light the baseball field. There are two lit softball fields at the Southeast Complex by Standing Bear, and then we're also able to light the soccer complex. So this is just continuing to progress on some of those identified needs that remained unmet, and we're looking at them when we can, where we can, just little incremental steps. So this is just one of those incremental steps.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10.1.5, Policy 4000 Series Human Resources. John?
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Price.
Yes, thank you. So you will probably notice that the majority of the changes here are in response really to legal and regulatory requirements. Also, we replaced some outdated information with current practices. And then we also updated some job titles and some language. We took this to our Personnel Policy Committee and got some great feedback, and so we also updated based on their suggestions, so.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 10.2.1 from the Superintendent, Woods Charitable Trust Grant Application. Mike?
Yes, good evening, Board members. Our federal programs team recently learned of an opportunity to apply for a grant from the Woods Charitable Fund. This would be a grant of $25,000, and if awarded, it would support our STRIVE program, which is, stands for Success Through Responsibility Initiative Values in Education. It is a tutoring and mentoring program for our English learner students who receive that support through an EL advocate who works to line them up with bilingual college students and graduates, and it provides them with individual tutoring services based on their needs. Could be individual, could be small group, could be subject-specific, could just be navigating high school. In order to maximize these funds, they would be used to supplement the STRIVE program specifically at Lincoln High School, which has our largest EL owner population and is where we host summer school, thus are able to serve students from throughout the district as well during that time. There is no matching requirement for these funds, but due to the timeline of the application, we would ask the board to waive second reading and consider taking action on this tonight.
Barb?
I move approval of 10.2.1 Woods Charitable Trust Grant Application.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Oh, yes, and waive the second reading.
All right, do you have a second?
I second.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Laura, would you call the roll?
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Kryvelavich?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarth?
Yes.
Mr. Shavostov?
Hi, abstain.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Next, item 11, second reading. We don't have any items for second reading. There are no expedited emergency actions, so we're on to item 13, removed from consent agenda, the contract for superintendent for a motion second and approval. Do we have a motion, or a motion second and discussion? Do we have a motion for approval?
I so move approval of item related to the superintendent.
Sure. Have a second, Annie, I think?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion. Barb?
Well, I don't have any prepared notes, but I just want to really thank Dr. Skretta for going and jumping in and with both feet and helping us go and stabilize during a different, difficult time. Everywhere I go throughout Lincoln, I hear good compliments and, and, and support for us taking the word interim away from you and making you a permanent superintendent. You connect well with our teachers, with, with our families, with our students. I joined you on a tour recently to McPhee Elementary School in the heart of Lincoln, and you, it, it's just obvious as we went through the school that the teachers connect with you, that you are an instructional leader that they, they can turn to. So thank you for your service, and we, I personally look forward to working with you over the next several years.
Annie, and then Peush.
Well, I also didn't write them down because I, you know, Dr. Skretta, the thing is, is that we could do a search, we could spend the money, we could do the time, and it takes a lot of time and it takes a lot of money. And one thing we are wise of knowing is that we didn't need to. When you have it right in front of you, well, you don't need to look any further. And it's not just because you, you came with so many skills, but you also are using your skills in some really positive ways. We have a really strong executive team, we have some really strong administrators, and you have utilized that team, that strength as well by, in just how you are a leader yourself. So I really think you epitomize also our all-mains-all, because I'm with Barb and having been with you to school visits. You have a complete vision of what we should be doing and what we're about, and I even asked you at one point, like, why did you leave teaching? You were such a good teacher to be an administrator. And I've always loved your answer. Your answer was, I love teaching, I love making, impacting lives. You just realized with your skills, you could impact more lives if you became an administrator. And so you have my complete trust that going forward, you are going to be impacting a lot of lives, and I, as join Barb, and that I'm very excited to be working with you on that.
Peush?
Yeah, I just want to say how proud I am of the work Dr. Skretta has done since stepping in the interim superintendent back in January, and before that as the associate superintendent back in, I believe it was July of 2024. And in this very short amount of time, the understanding and knowledge about LPS and the engagement that he has shown is truly remarkable. I've personally seen how well he is connected with our staff and students, and he listens, he communicates clearly, and he is present, which is extremely important. I've also heard from numerous community members who have shared how impressed they are with his leadership and steady hand. And so tonight, I'm thrilled to officially welcome him as our permanent superintendent, and congratulations, and I'm super looking forward to working with you.
It's a good season to come to the board new. And one of the things that I would say there is, an old saying, now with the interim title shortly removed, we got Dr. Skretta's best, but now with the interim removed, we can anticipate better. We are thrilled as a freshman board member to welcome you to a space where the work is all divine.
G'dow to everyone. My short time with you superintendent is, I go by this, there's two important days of a person's life, the day they born and the day they figure out why. And just the time that we have spent together, you have, I know that you know the why of why you're on this earth, and it's an honor and a privilege to work alongside of you to make sure that we're impacting lives in the community and the students at Lincoln Public Schools so their gift can be deployed to the world. So thank you.
I just would like to add, as a parent with three sons at LPS, how fortunate I feel as a board member, but as a parent, to have you as our permanent superintendent to lead the students and the teachers in this district.
It's an incredibly exciting time, so thank you for your service.
Notice to add, just for the public, we've had comments about, well, how did, how did this come about? Well, as you can see, the, our experiences as seven board members were pretty much very, very consistent. Many of us have been approached by community members for months now. People have approached me at the Chamber of Commerce, at Rotary Meeting, at the coffee shop, and pretty much the consistency is, is just the same from everybody. And we also did get input from staff, and the same thing was heard. So sometimes as, as a board, we have to make really big, tough decisions, but sometimes we get to make a really big, really easy decision. And so I think this is one of those, so. So with that, Laura, would you call the roll?
Ms. Mumgarth?
Most definitely, yes.
Mr. Shavostov?
Yes.
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson Farr?
Yes.
Mrs. Kryvelavich?
Yes.
Dr. Rowner?
Yes.
Congratulations. Are there any reports from the board committees? Barb?
Yes. I chair the, our planning committee, and I am very thankful to have Peush and John join me on that committee. We have met earlier today, and one of the things I wanted to report to the full board is the progress on our student support facility at Yankee Hill. In May of 2024, the board approved revising the 10-year plan to include a 47,000-square-foot facility at the Yankee Hill Education Center site. The new space will house Yankee Hill Education Center, High School Student Support Program, and the High School Transition Program. The current Yankee Hill facility will then house the Independent Success Program for grades K through 12. We are moving to the next stage of planning the facility. Tonight, the full board has received a copy of the Prepared Schematic Design booklet. There it is. And the, the facility design included input from students, families, staff, and community organizations. LPS is seeking annexation, which will be before the Lancaster Planning Commission on September 17th. The new facility will be ready for use in the 2027, '28 school year. So I'm really happy about the progress on this, as I'm sure we all are, and thank you for the update.
Great. Any other board committees? Annie?
The TCA Joint Board met at the Career Academy this morning. We're a joint board because we are in partnership with SEC. And since last year, the summer project was completed, the front drive was repoured and concrete was completed. And part of this has to happen is because we are 10 years old, and we are going to be having a planning, Kayla Jaycox with the Foundation of Lincoln Public Schools came, and we're planning a fundraiser for Get Out Your Pencils, October 30th, open house beginning at 4:30 with some involvement from a student panel. There's a lot of outreach happening to long-time and new TCA corporate donors, so any listening audience who would like to be a corporate donor, please reach out to our new super, non-interim, new, full superintendent, Dr. Skretta, who is on the board with me. There is also, just to go back just a tiny bit, that it's also a few parking issues. If you've not been to SEC recently, it is not your grandma's SEC. It's not even your, you know, your old mom's SEC. It is so amazing out there and all they have going out there, and like most places, a little bit of a parking issue. And they had an issue with our, one of our buses getting delayed, and instead of that being a norm, the partnership worked really well with SEC, and they got on it, and now they have created a process in which the bus can leave before other vehicles that, after the bus was late for an hour and a half one day, that's all it took. And I just think that shows a lot of strength about the relationship we have with SEC and the respect for what's happening there and with our kids. We, speaking of which, we had three students come today. They're all seniors, Aiden, Ben, and Dominic, and they are, some of them are doing double pathways. They do a pathway in the morning, and then they do a pathway in the afternoon. They're all seniors, partly able to do this because of getting, able to get credits done. And so in doing that, they're really checking out different things they would like to possibly do in their future. All three are doing welding, precision machinery, and construction, and they're all in Skills USA, which also was supported by two of our local businesses, Stone Brook Roofing and Ghana Trucking, which actually also came in and helped with the educational aspect of helping the kids learn the skills that they would need to take to the Skills USA. It's just really a great, really wonderful to see the whole vision coming to play of all the partnerships happening. With that said, our enrollment is at the highest it's ever been with 797 students. We anticipate additional students coming in the spring to exceed 800, and we have over 60 non-public students this semester. We are at what you might call at capacity with our classrooms, just in what we are offering, but we are not at capacity with student level. So if you have students who are interested, there is space out there in some of the different pathways worth looking at. He also shared, they've done a survey data that firms at the high school experience for the students. All three of the young men who spoke with us was fascinating that they, they are, are truly there to learn not only a skill but a process and towards, and looking towards a future. And that's really kind of what our whole goal was about. I just wanted to say that one of them said, one thing we should do is, they need a student lounge. So, and, and the other thing he says, we needed to add auto mechanic. They're already thinking about pathways that are not there. I think that's really super that students themselves are saying, I have friends, but this is what's missing, though we do that really well at high school. And almost all of them had had a high school experience, and that, that caused them to want to do and come to TCA for further experience. So it's really a truly a collective efficacy of a partnership with Southeast Community College and our students in our schools, so we meet again in December.
All right. Any other reports? Next, from the superintendent.
Thank you. So ahead of a few other remarks tonight, I, I just want to make sure that I say thank you to Angelina and the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools. We heard the number, right, 4 million plus in resources last year alone that were channeled back to our Lincoln Public Schools students and staff through the philanthropic commitments of the Foundation for Lincoln Public Schools. Super grateful for that and really the differentiating impact that that provides for so many students and staff every year. I'm deeply appreciative to the Board of Education for the vote of confidence and the commitment to continuing our collaborative work. This is a great board anchored in mission and purpose to ensure that every LPS student thrives. Also want to express how much I enjoy working with the dedicated district-level team here at the Steve Joel District Leadership Center, aka The Steve. And, and that for me starts with our incredible associate superintendents and includes our directors across each division. Tonight marks a momentous occasion for me to fully serve as superintendent, no interim label, no asterisk. I embrace this in a spirit of consistency, stability, and a shared commitment to excellence in student achievement academically and by positive affiliation through school activities and athletics, which we offer in LPS, because we strive every day to provide abundant learning, growth, and development opportunities for our amazing LPS students. I'm grateful as well for the LPS community and the support, really across this incredible city of Lincoln that we benefit from as a district, because we have the privilege and responsibility of being one school district, one city, and the many partnerships we share where it's evident that we are striving together for great student outcomes. Lincoln Public Schools is a destination district. It's a place where education professionals long to be, and the city of Lincoln is one of the most livable communities anywhere, incredible quality of life. So the role of superintendent of Lincoln- So the role of Superintendent of Lincoln Public Schools is a privilege. The fact that I get to do this work and get to continue this work energizes and excites me, and I see that same love of learning and doing reflected in our LPS team members. Our staff possess incredible expertise, collective efficacy, and our team at every level, from our bus drivers and building custodians to building leaders, every level across the district. Their work with passion and purpose every day is evident, and it's a joy to be around them. And it has to be said, the dedicated and expert classroom teachers across this school system are truly amazing. So I look forward to continuing our work to fully realize our mission of ensuring that every student is prepared for successful careers, lifelong learning, and civic engagement. And we know we have the team to get it done. Thank you.
So announcements of upcoming events for the Board. We have the NESB Area Membership Meeting at 5:00 PM tomorrow at the Nebraska City High School. September 11th to 12th is the CUBE Conference, the Council of Urban Boards of Education Conference in Los Angeles, California. September 15th, Voices for Children, Nebraska Annual Luncheon, 11:00 AM in Omaha. September 16th is Face the Chamber at Noon at the Country Club. September 18th is Lincoln Education Association FR Council at 4:15 PM at the Bryan Community Council, Community School. And then September 23rd, again, we have right here, back here, Lincoln Public Schools and ESU 18 Board Meetings at 6:00 PM. We have no public comment, no request for a closed session, so we are adjourned and will follow with the ESU meeting.
I call to order the Board of Education ESU 18 Meeting. We have the Open Meetings Act, oh, roll call. Laura, could you call roll call, please?
Ms. Byer.
Here.
Mr. Goodwin.
Present.
Dr. Johnson Farr.
Present.
Mrs. Krevalovic.
Here.
Ms. Mumgarth.
Yes, here.
Dr. Rounner.
Here.
Mr. Shavostov.
Present.
Okay, so we have the Open Meetings Act posted in the vegetable as you come into this room, if you're so interested. I will now go into the special public hearing on 2025-2026 ESU 18 Property Tax Request. The governing body of the Educational Service Unit Number 18 is conducting this special hearing pursuant to Section 77-1632, previously 77-1601.02, and other Nebraska laws. These laws provide that the 2025-2026 property tax requests may not exceed the Educational Service Unit's property tax requests from the prior year unless the unit first holds a special public hearing and then passes a resolution that includes all requirements of the statutes. The prior year's property tax requests would not correctly fund the 2025-2026 budget, which is being considered for formal adoption by the governing, the unit governing board at a later meeting. The purpose of this public, this special public hearing is to receive testimony on the proposed property tax request. Any testimony received will be taken into consideration by the unit governing board when action is taken to approve or modify the provided property tax request prior to October 15, 2025. A notice of this special hearing containing all statutory information has been published in a newspaper of general circulation in Educational Service Unit Number 18 at least four days prior to the hearing. I hereby open this special public hearing for Educational Service Unit Number 18. Blue cards are available at the entrance for those wishing to speak on the proposed property tax requests. Each speaker is allowed three minutes and may provide printed materials to the Board. Please begin your remarks by introducing yourself, and we will inform you when one minute remains. Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act now requires that any member of the public desiring to provide public comment or to otherwise address the Board shall identify themselves, including an address and the name of any organization represented by such person. Seeing no one else wishing to speak on the property tax requests, I hereby close this public hearing. This concludes this evening's public hearing for Educational Service Unit Number 18. Then we'll go on to the approval for the minutes. The minutes are from June 24, 2025, and August 25, 2025. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, they are approved. I have no blue cards for public comments. Consent agenda, we have, I will turn this over to Annie Mumgarth.
And again, we're going to be talking about our budget development. ESU budget is developed right alongside our LPS budget, and we do that again with Dr. Standish, and who will again give us a brief, brief presentation on 9.1.1, 2025, six ESU 18 Budget Adoption, and 9.1.2, 2526 ESU 18 Property Tax Request.
Yes, the ESU budget is in front of you, so you have the revenue budget, which is spelled out on this slide and was presented in our July work session. In addition, the expenditure budgets, a significant portion of the ESU budget is also staff. It's staff either paid through direct salary lines or through contracted services. We had increases for salary and benefits and contracted services related to negotiated increases. And then we had some changes in the Pathfinder, Pathfinder program. And you would also notice that we did need to increase the budget authority specifically to account for grants. And so we have made some changes there to make sure we had plenty of authority for grants. And we'd had our notice of our budget hearing has been published, and everything will be filed as required with the state auditor to adopt the budget by the end of September, and the property tax requests will be filed by mid-October. And so the same team works on the ESU budget on behalf of the Board of the ESU and the unit, and it's all prepared and ready to go. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Seeing no questions from the Board, we move on to 9.2. Anything from the Superintendent on this particular item? No. We don't have anything for second reading. And again, I have no cards for public comment. There's been no request for a closed session. I hereby adjourn this meeting.